Township Board to order. We'll ask folks to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And leading us today will be Gavin Barr, who is with troop number?
Two seventy-three.
Two seventy-three, okay. All right, Gavin, you lead us off today, okay?
I hand over heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the people who stand in one nation, under God, individual, putting justice for all. You may be seated.
Thank you, Gavin. That was awesome.
Did he just say, "You may stay in Michigan"? Is that what he said?
No, he said you may be seated.
Oh.
Rule call, please. Now, clerk?
Trustee Wade?
Here.
Trustee Metuzak?
Here.
Trustee Kress?
Present.
Supervisor Gilliam?
Here.
Trustee King?
Present.
Treasurer Ilo is absent and excused. Clerk Meltzer here.
That brings us to...
Mr. Supervisor?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Clerk Meltzer, the website seems to be going in and out, so I just want to make sure the camera stuff is...
I just spoke with them.
Okay.
They're good.
They're good?
They're good. However, if they are listening and if there is a problem, they can always contact the phone here, and Supervisor will pick up, and then he can relay whatever complications and what we may need to do on our end, if anything at all.
All right, because when we're pulling up the agenda, we're getting a little box with an unhappy face on it.
Oh, yeah. It was happy a minute ago.
I don't know what that means, but... And then it comes back, so I just want to make sure we're okay.
Is it happy, then, on the other one it comes back? Is it a happy face?
On this one, it's happy. Well, it shows me the words as opposed to the unhappy face.
Okay. Which is what we want. Thank you.
Okay. So, we need a motion to approve the agenda as presented. One item, kratom enforcement ordinance.
So moved.
Moved by Clerk Meltzer, supported by Trustee Wade. Any discussion? Rule call, please.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Trustee Wade?
Yes.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Kress?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilliam?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, so that brings us to item number one, the kratom enforcement ordinance. I'm going to turn things over to Trustee King, who has brought this issue forward, so he can do welcome introductions and kind of give a sense as to how the flow is going to happen here through the various speakers.
Thank you so much, Paul. So first, I just want to be able to give everyone some insight as to how this topic came up for our township, how it came something important to myself, and then let everybody know the work that has been done thus far. And then we'll take everybody through, you know, what our roll-up or lineup will be, and then we'll go from there. Some of you may know from some prior township board meetings that I sit along with some of the other distinguished members here in our board on our opioid committee. And that opioid committee makes decisions, or was making decisions, on important nonprofit groups, important groups that help with addiction and recovery, and would be making some decisions on where money would be allocated to be able to help those groups be able to further deal with addiction and recovery services within Clinton Township. As part of that process, some of those individuals who work for those nonprofit groups and those, you know, addiction recovery services mentioned kratom. And they talked about that it was a substance or something that we should be paying attention to and something that was important. So at that time, I took on some research, did some work, and really felt after doing that research that this is something that we should be looking at as a township. I want us to make sure that our township is providing preventative, you know, care and preventative ideas, you know, to our residents and make sure that we're doing what we can to be on the front side of public health and make sure that we're not overreaching, but we'll make sure that we're working appropriately to help keep our residents safe. And so I brought it to our Budget Ways and Means meeting to be able to discuss and see if there was an appetite for the committee to be able to hear out what I had to say and if there's some other board members or other interests of that committee for me to be able to take that further. So the Budget Ways and Means, I presented, which I believe is in the packet, you know, PowerPoint presentation, talked to them about the research that I found, and presented them some information. They believed that there's some teeth to it, but prior to bringing it to a full board or prior to doing anything, they wanted me to be able to do a PSA and be able to help inform the public, be able to reach out, and be able to do some more work, talk to more individuals, and do some of that, some work from that perspective. I did that. And so I came back to the Budget Ways and Means and said, "Okay, I did the PSA, done some additional work, talked to additional professionals, got some additional information, and where do we go from here?" And so we talked that through at the next Budget Ways and Means meeting, and at that time, we still didn't feel confident that, not only that we had done enough to be able to talk to our township, but we had done enough to really educate our full board before deciding, do we do anything? Do we make a decision? Do we move forward? So at that time, we decided that we would have an informational session that would be most prudent to be able to sit down with our residents, be able to sit down with our full board, and be able to help educate and provide informational session. Today, we will not be conducting a vote. We are simply here to be able to learn from professionals who will be talking about kratom, to listen to our residents who have either ideas, concerns, or things that they would like to mention that's important to them. And then at that time, I'll make a decision to either bring it back to this board again for decision-making and be able to, you know, allow more time for people to be able to reach out to myself, to be able to give, you know, their concerns, their thoughts, to make sure that this is balanced and make sure that this is not something that is a personal whim, but this is something that if people get opportunity to have information about it, it'll be the will of our residents. So with that being said, we are going to have an overview of what kratom is. We will then talk a little bit about addiction and recovery, you know, and an individual who works with that and talks a little bit about what kratom looks like from that perspective. We'll talk about the Kratom Protection Act, and we'll have an individual professional be able to talk through what that looks like and what some different communities throughout the country has done. And then at that time, we'll then wrap things up with what our legal options are, what, you know, will be next steps. Like I kind of just mentioned, to be honest with you, is that, you know, we're not going to make a vote tonight. We're going to really, you know, be honest, sit on it, give opportunity for our residents to reach out to me and be able to speak through it. And then we'll see if we, you know, if I make a decision to be able to bring it back to this board, so the board will be able to make a decision from that perspective. And then we'll go from there.
So that brings us to overview?
That brings us to overview. And we're going to be having Dr. McGun from the Chippewa Valley Family Coalition come and be able to speak with us today and give us a brief overview of kratom and talk through some of the facts of what kratom is. Dr. McGun?
Good evening, everybody. As Mr. King mentioned, I work with the Chippewa Valley Coalition for Youth and Families, and we combine parents, community, and school in prevention of substance use by youth and suicide prevention. And kratom has been on our radar screen for a bit of time now. I'd say probably three and a half years. My first awareness of it came in meeting with a group of medical social workers from a hospital system who expressed concern about the number of pregnant women that they were meeting with that were using kratom to control nausea. And the concern was about prenatal exposure to the substance, as well as what has emerged over time is some indication of the potential for developmental issues from prenatal exposure. I also ran into kratom very shortly after that through a group of graduate students at Wayne State who were placed in substance use settings where they were providing treatment as interns. And they were talking about the number of people they were encountering in recovery who were using kratom. These were opioid people that had been addicted to opioids and were using kratom. Their concern was the potential for addiction. Where the coalition moved from that point was to partner with Project Vox, which is a part of a recovery, it's a recovery support organization, part of care. And we established a work group, so this is about three and a half years ago. Our work group worked closely over a period of time gathering research, because that's what our coalition does. We gather research and conduct some research with students. We worked closely with the Michigan Poison and Drug Control Center during this period of time, and Dr. Varun Vorha, who has supported our gathering of information, was instrumental as we produced three pieces of information. And those pieces of information combined and created an overview of kratom. What we learned in the course of this is that kratom is not FDA-approved. In fact, if you look at the FDA website, it advises no use of kratom, that there isn't sufficient research to support it, and there's a concern about adverse effects. The DEA, the Drug Enforcement Agency, calls kratom a drug of concern. The National Drug Control Center, which compiles national data, some of the information we captured from that site was the fact that about 3,400 individuals suffered adverse consequences over a five-year period, ending in 2019, resulting in some deaths, although the number was not disclosed, resulting from adverse effects of kratom. The kratom is an interesting substance, and you may hear from others that are going to speak, so I won't get into a lot of it, but it is a substance that results from deriving from the leaves of a tree in Southeast Asia. And it is marketed in various forms, pills, tea, it's chewed, and other forms. There is no oversight, however, no quality control of kratom. And the number of issues that we encountered as we looked at the research was, first of all, with extended and intensive use, the risk of addiction, because it has opiate-like Also, because there's no standardization of kratom, there's no dose-specific specification of it. In other words, you don't know what the dose is. Because of that also, there is a concern reflected on national websites, like the National Institute on Drug Abuse, which is part of the federal government, of the issue of contamination. And the contaminants have generally, in samples, been heavy metals, they have been bacteria, as well as some unspecified kind of contaminating elements, as well as fungus. The effects of kratom really vary from a mild effect, which is users that I've spoken to describe as, that it addresses pain, that it increases attention, because kratom is a stimulant. There are, again, though, there are no FDA-approved uses of kratom. At the other end of the continuum, which would be probably eight milligrams, if you were able to measure that actually, of kratom, would lead to a variety of effects that have included cardiovascular, long-term use has been, and heavy use has been associated with liver issues, with seizures, and with other medical conditions. Also, there are drug interactions that have to be accounted for in the research. One of the, one of the things I'd say in conclusion is that kratom is not a drug of choice for youth. National survey data, like Monitoring the Future, NUSDA, which comes out of the Substance Abuse Mental Health Administration, they show national, some national use of kratom by youth, but it's not large. Our youth, because we do, our coalition at both Chippewa Valley and Dakota High School runs focus groups, and also we're in the continued exploration with our students of drugs of choice, it does not indicate that kratom is a substance used by youth, at least at this point. It is primarily a substance that is used by adults. Thank you for your attention.
Questions from the board?
I don't know if you'd be able, I had a couple of questions.
Ms. McGun, can you?
Yeah.
Please.
Sure. Do you know, is kratom ever found to be laced with something else? Like, you know, somebody would get marijuana and maybe mix some fentanyl in with it? Has there been any studies or do you have any background information on if it's laced with anything?
There is a reference, and I think it's Mayo Clinic's website, to the adulterant, which is the addition of a substance to another substance, and it's been opioids. I'm not, I've not heard of it being laced with other things.
Okay.
At least not my awareness.
Yeah, and kind of a follow-up on that. Hypothetically, we banned it for 21 and younger. Do you think that would open up a secondary market for a middle person to buy it, lace it with something, and then sell it on the street? Has there been any talk about that or forethought?
I really don't, I don't, I can't answer that. You know, what I can say, though, is that it is not a primary drug of choice of youth. So what would ensue if an age limit was set? I don't know. But it is not, it would not capture the major group that appears to be using the substance.
And my last question. When it's sold, does it always have the same level of an active ingredient in it? Or does that vary depending on where you buy it, who you buy it from? Like marijuana, some THC levels are higher than some other ones, obviously. Is kratom the same way, or is it one standard active ingredient in all kratom that you buy?
It is not. In fact, if you look at the FDA website, that's one of their concerns, because it's not standardized, it's not lab-tested, so you don't know the strength of the primary element in the kratom that you're getting. And I think that is one of the major concerns.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
To that point, to the point?
Saying, here, I got Trustee Metuzak and then Clerk Meltzer.
Do we have any data about how many people are using it or how much is sold every year?
I don't, I don't have that information. That's an interesting question. What I can say is what concerned the work group that we formed was the proliferation of the sale of the substance and the broad advertising of it. But how much is being sold, I really don't know.
Okay. And where is it primarily sold at?
It's found in tobacco shops, it's gas stations, it is marketed pretty broadly.
Okay. Thank you.
Here and elsewhere.
Thank you.
Clerk Meltzer?
Thank you. So you stated, and thank you again for your explanation, but you stated the FDA has concerns, so what are they doing in regards to that? Is this something that they may want to regulate in the near future? Are you hearing that might be something where the federal government will regulate?
In our experience, the FDA is very slow to regulate. Now, that's a very broad statement, and I don't claim to be an expert about the FDA, but I, we have generally seen them very slow to, there really is a lot of research that should be done on kratom. And I don't know where that stands with the FDA. We had a presentation on kratom from Dr. Vora, again, the director of the Michigan Poison and Drug Control Center, last week, Tuesday. And he was stating that he believes they're very slow to do any research.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
That brings us to item C, kratom uses in recovery and overlooked risks.
Yes, we have...
Would you like to introduce the speaker that we have?
We have Lauren here from Project Vox, Care of Southeastern Michigan.
Hello. I can address that point. The FDA is doing a study, it's supposed to start this summer with Baylor University, on the addictive effects of kratom.
Good. Thank you.
My pleasure. So I am Lauren Ledsmann. I'm the Project Vox Coordinator from Coen County through Care of Southeastern Michigan. I'm also a person in long-term recovery, which means to me, I have maintained abstinence from mood and mind-altering substances since July 16th of 2015. Professionally, I'm a certified peer recovery coach, a certified peer recovery mentor. I am in the process of completing my Certified Prevention Specialist certification, and I am pursuing my degree in public health from the University of Michigan. As a person in long-term recovery, I work in multiple capacities with the recovery community, through professional support, public advocacy, being of service, mentorship/sponsorship, friendship, and being a voice of hope to people who have substance use disorder. Substance use disorder can affect individuals across all demographics, regardless of age, profession, background, things like that. A challenge that many in recovery have is navigating sort of the landscape of legal and readily available substances which may carry a risk of addiction or returning to use. Not everyone is in recovery is fully well-versed on the symptoms and effects of such substances. There are some that are well-versed and could be a drug encyclopedia, but not many are. And especially with things that have the addictive potential, risks associated with substances that are considered natural, especially with the lack of regulation and oversight. In approximately the past five years, there's been an increase in marketing of products containing kratom. They've been positioned as safe alternatives to alcohol or described using terms like non-inebriating bliss. These products are often attractively packaged, sold in convenience stores, gas stations, things like that, and they resemble energy drinks, teas, and supplements. The presence of the terms like "natural" as used for substances like energy drinks, yerba mate, matcha, tineptine, kratom, can lead consumers to mistakenly think that those products are inherently safe, because they're considered natural. In my personal recovery, I have firsthand observed different individuals with different, in different points of their use and in different points of their recovery. I worked with a respiratory therapist and parent who was looking for an alternative to caffeine. So she stopped drinking soda and coffee and found herself with kratom, and she found herself with the same dependence that she had with her alcohol use disorder. In 2018 approximately, I had another friend who was recently released from a inpatient treatment facility. She was still navigating the effects of opioid withdrawal, and she had heard that kratom was a good alternative. She was concerned about the stigma around medications for opioid use disorder, the accessibility of those, and was just looking for a safer alternative. And unfortunately, in 2019, she passed away from the disease of addiction. These are not isolated incidents. I have witnessed the physical, emotional, and social toll that it takes on, that individuals have and on their families. Despite its prevalence, kratom remains largely undetectable on like a standard drug screen. So anything including pre-employment, if there was a workplace incident, probation or parole, urinary drug screens, which complicates both prevention and intervention effects. I'm currently acquainted with a trauma nurse whose use of kratom and other substances may suggest a potential substance use disorder, but such substances would be undetectable in a urinary drug screen. As we continue to support individuals in recovery and educate the broader community, it's essential that we acknowledge and address the risks associated with substances like kratom, especially which are marketed in ways that obscure their potential for harm. And I move it to any questions.
Questions from the board?
Just a comment.
Clerk Meltzer?
Thank you. Thank you, Lauren, for the explanation. It is interesting. I'm a lightweight when it comes to any type of ingestion of things that are supposed to make me feel better, caffeine included. I can only have very limited amounts. However, I can ingest a lot of chocolate. Seems to be my fix. But, and I won't name the actual drink, but it was an energy drink, which generally I wouldn't drink, but this one claimed to be like a healthy choice. And I noticed how badly I felt after I was using it for a few days. Now, that's my, you know, just my experience, but I wanted to share that because you're sharing how those that were addicted to another drug, opioid, then tried to use kratom to balance that out and then became addicted to it, believing that it would help them. And so I just think there is things out there, and every human body is so very different, and we respond differently to different drugs and different food and anything that we take and ingest. So I think it's very important that everybody be personally responsible as an adult to make those choices. Also, I think people have the right to make bad choices, unfortunately, but hopefully, you know, there are programs there that would help somebody that becomes addicted, and there are. What you're doing is phenomenal and necessary, and nobody goes into this thinking they're going to become addicted. Nobody thinks that it's going to happen to them, and it can happen to any of us at any time. So I thank you for what you're doing. I just kind of wanted to share with you a little bit of my limited, very limited perspective in terms of using or ingesting any type of alternative for making me feel better.
Do you know what was in the energy drink that you were consuming?
So, but I can tell you afterward. I just don't want to, you know, it's widely used right now. And I'm just like, wow, it really makes me feel bad. But it was stated that it was a healthy alternative, a healthy choice, so...
Did you know what the substance was before you?
I didn't, no. I just know how it made me feel, and I'm like, huh, I'll go back to drinking water with lemon.
Yeah.
It seems to be okay for me. Thank you.
A couple of questions.
Trustee Wade?
Yes. With the, you said dependency, or I'll call it an addiction, somebody could get to kratom. What would you put in its place to alleviate that addiction?
I could go into a whole length of services, but essentially, healthy dopamine. So exercise, sunlight, being of service, doing yoga.
So you wouldn't swap out one substance for another?
No.
Okay.
But, so with the friend that I had that had opioid use disorder, there are medications that are FDA-approved that are proven to be very effective to mitigate withdrawal symptoms as well as help them stabilize in their recovery. So something like buprenorphine or suboxone, sublicade, methadone, something like that.
And a follow-up question, I may be going a bit too far here. Law enforcement follows somebody down Grosebeck. They're weaving in and out of traffic, you know? They appear to be intoxicated. They stop them, they've got kratom in the car. And you're saying that a simple urine test would not detect it? What about a blood test? Because typically, there's no blood test that would do that either?
Not that I'm aware of. And actually, a colleague that I work with, Liz, she knows a lot more about this. She works in the addiction community, but not that I'm aware of.
Okay. That would probably be something, if this thing takes off like, you know, people are thinking it might, that we look into, you know, in some research, maybe somebody could detect it. Because obviously, it's, you know, it's like marijuana. You have to specifically get a blood test and request that in order to do it. But you're saying we can't do that with this?
Not currently.
Okay.
Were there questions, comments from the board? Anyone from the public?
Oh, a question or comment?
Question.
I have no questions.
Okay.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Lauren.
So trustee King, that gets us through, what? The use in recovery and overlooked risks?
Yes.
And so next item, KCPA prospective, regulating, regulation overban?
That's correct. And I believe we, online, we have Laura Romney, who is looking to present this. I believe she is virtually.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I believe I have a PowerPoint that should be coming up that someone's going to run.
Which one would you like me to open first? The education or?
Oh, the education one's fine. Yeah, that's the one.
Okay.
The other one was just a supplement, if they wanted to read out on them.
All right, so I don't know how to get out of this. This is problematic here.
If you can act, you can let me share the screen.
Yes. All right, let me, yeah, let me do that.
And do that.
Perfect.
Was this included in the packet? The actual presentation? Okay.
Just have to have her share the screen.
Okay, hold on, I'm going to get to the right.
It's been a while since the pandemic.
Well, no, it's actually, no, she just has to give me authorization.
Our virtual options.
Oh, you're on, hold on. Okay. Okay. I found it.
There we go.
You got it?
Yes, yes.
Okay, perfect, perfect, great. This is always the most frustrating part of this technology. I get more stressed about that than anything when I present. So, but I really appreciate you as a board letting me speak to you today about kratom. I'm actually zooming in from Utah. I'm a kratom educator. I actually have extensive experience just with the education and also as an eight-year kratom consumer for my chronic pain, which I will talk about that in just a minute. But to start out, I wanted to just show you a picture of what it looks like because many times people do not know what it looks like. So this is actually a picture of a kratom tree. And these are pictures of the actual kratom powder. You can see it in capsule form as well. And there's three different colors, you know, shades of green. They all have different effects, pain, mood, and energy. And I just wanted to let you know, there's also extracts that you can purchase that are pure plant extracts that are just very concentrated. They're alcohol-based, just like a typical extract is. But it is actually from the pure plant. Okay, let me get to the next screen. So kratom is typically used for a couple of things. Typically, for chronic pain, it's used for anxiety and mood. Like the other person said, you know, a lot of times just for a boost, kind of like caffeine. Can be helpful for depression in people that have PTSD. A lot of veterans use it for issues that they experience. And also for use with withdrawing from opioids. And interestingly enough, the reason why it is so effective is it negates a lot of the withdrawal symptoms that come from the consumption of, you know, an illicit substance or opioids. So it makes it a lot easier for people to withdraw because they're not having a lot of the same, you know, the side effects that they're having. So it makes the transition much, much easier for them to get off of them versus, you know, going to a drug called, like suboxone or buprenorphine, like was mentioned. I wanted to point something out. Down, you'll see a little post there that was actually from Facebook. So there is a, it's called the Doctor-Patient Forum, and they support pain patients and opioids and things like that. But interestingly enough, on April 16th, just a couple of days ago, there was a poster that posted this about using kratom for their pain. And they were concerned about the legality in Tennessee. And I just wanted to point out how many comments actually came in on that particular post. About 80 to 90% of those comments were all positive. So this goes to show you how many people that are in chronic pain are actually consuming this plant rather than taking opioids, especially when they do not have access to them. So I have two sections here, kratom versus pharmaceuticals. So kratom can actually be a great tool in combating the opioid crisis. A lot of people are unable to get pain medication at all. Doctors are literally not giving opiate or benzodeprescriptions these days. It's almost impossible to get them. And now people are looking to alternative methods like cannabis and kratom to be able to try to manage their chronic pain and their symptoms. And many prefer them over the painkillers just because they do not have, it does not have a lot of the same side effects. I know myself, I took gabapentin for my condition, and it permanently destroyed my short-term memory. So things like that are real things. As you, anybody that's watched a pharmaceutical commercial realizes all the side effects. But with kratom, the biggest side effect that you see is constipation and dehydration. But myself, just a quick history, I'll move quickly. I've had a condition called atypical trigeminal neuralgia for 13 years. It's a chronic facial nerve disease, which gives me excruciating pain on the whole top half of my face. I've actually had brain surgery. I had a stimulator implanted in my face. I failed on about 30 different medications. And finally was, finally ended up in pain management where I was only given an insufficient dose of opioids. Did not control my pain enough to let me to function. And when I found kratom, it allowed me to get off all of opioids and to be able to function, work full-time, volunteer, be a mom. It literally has like changed my life. And that's why I'm such a passionate advocate for this plant. But it also, it was raised that there are some concerns about addiction. But one thing that is really incredibly important to remember is that kratom does not suppress respiratory, it has no respiratory depression. It's a partial mu agonist, so which means that it partially attaches to that opiate agonist, which is why it helps for pain and things like that. But it's not like a full agonist like a typical opiate is that can suppress breathing. And for responsible users, which is the majority of people that use kratom, they have very mild to moderate withdrawal symptoms when they stop. All they have to typically do is just taper down like you would with any pharmaceutical. But, you know, of course, if someone is an abuser of any substance, the withdrawals are going to be higher if they truly are an abuser. It's always important to remember that dependence does not mean addiction. I am dependent on medication. I'm dependent on kratom for control my pain, but that does not mean that I'm addicted. I wanted to point something out here. There is a group on Facebook that I just found. It's called Lost Voices of Fentanyl. And I wanted to post this. This actually was from today, actually. And I thought this was such an interesting thing. I want to point out, look how many members are in this group. There's almost 36,000 members. And these people have lost loved ones from illicit fentanyl. But let me show you what, I'm going to read a part of her post. She said her daughter basically died two years ago. And she said, I was, she was waiting for a prescription for a new medication to help with her anxiety. She held on as long as she could before getting a Xanax from someone, and it took her life. So what happened is this gal was not allowed her Xanax prescription. They were tapering her to something else. And she was desperate because she couldn't, you know, she couldn't obtain that medication she was reliant on and turned to the black market and ended up with illicit fentanyl and died. So this is a real situation that a ban in your community could result in. If people cannot access pain medication or they are reliant on some of the black market drugs, they can be a victim of illicit fentanyl, which obviously causes death. One thing I do want to point out is, I do know, I noticed that there, we do have an advocate on the call tonight that can actually really, her name is Misty. If you really want to hear, I suggest taking two or three minutes and hearing from her because she is a recovered addict that used kratom to come off successfully of her addiction. So I'll leave that, she can participate in public comment. But this is the one thing I really wanted to point out tonight. I don't know if any of you have heard of 7OH products. There is an alkaloid in pure plant kratom called seven-hydroxymetrogenine. It's a very small amount. It's less than 1% in pure plant. But chemists have gone and they have created a synthetic product. This is not kratom. These are pure synthetics, and they're extremely powerful. They have a 14 to 22 times greater than morphine binding effect, and they are very addicting. Sadly, these products are sold, here's a picture of them. You can see they're marketed to look exactly like narcotics. Look at the names of them, Oxy. There are some called Perks. And, you know, they allude to the fact that they are kratom, but they're not. They're actually pure synthetic product. Whereas down below here, where you see this like extract, black liquid, that is a pure plant extract. But these products are synthetic, and they are very, very dangerous. And when I talk quickly about the KCPA, I will explain how this takes these off the shelves. Okay. So again, going to the Kratom Consumer Protection Act. This is a piece of legislation that the American Kratom Association is pushing through the United States. I live in Utah, and we are actually the first state to have passed this particular law. And as you can see, Michigan has not yet passed it. We still have it in the works, but there are actually even more states now, this has not been updated since I did this PowerPoint, that have passed this KCPA. And I will explain what is in that legislation. So what we're asking communities to do is rather than ban and put all of their citizens at risk for all of the things that I've spoken about, or take it away from patients like me, or deprive people that have addiction issues from, you know, this life-saving tool, we say put this legislation in place. So basically, if you pass this ordinance, it restricts it to 21-plus, and all of these products would be sold behind the counter. The most important is the second part. It actually, it requires that the seven-hydroxymetrogenine content is less than 2%, which means all of those dangerous, or 7OH products I showed you are now banned. They would not be illegal, and they would have to be pulled off the shelves. It talks about, it requires GMP standards. So this actually acts, these last two things right here talk about and answer the question that one of your board members had. They talked about, you know, how do we know that it's been tested or it's pure if it's adulterated? Well, that's the beauty of this law is because you would be requiring that whoever sold the product would have to sell it in packaging and show that they were lab-tested. It has to be properly labeled, shows that has a serving size, serving recommendations. It has batch tracking, so you can actually, you know, track exactly where the batch came from. And it has supplemental language such as, do not use, you know, while pregnant, you know, consult your doctor, all of the things that a typical supplement has. Now, I did want to point out, you did mention about the FDA and, you know, not having it approved. I don't know if you know this, but all supplements out there are not FDA-approved. So if you look at your fish oil supplement or your multivitamin, those are not FDA-approved. They have to be labeled and produced to FDA standards, but they are quote technically not FDA-approved. So this is not just a one-off product that's just that the FDA does not approve. And I wanted to ask, just do a couple other questions. This will address some of the things that were brought up. You talked about, you know, how do we know which product has the same levels in it? You know, do we know which is stronger? That's the beauty of this labeling as well. The person can turn the package around and say, this has this certain amount of milligrams of metrogenine, which is that main active ingredient in it. Or they can look at the extract and say, oh, this has a serving size of three servings, and it will give you this much metrogenine. So there is a way to know exactly how much you are taking. You definitely do not want to be consuming product that is not tested because that's where you are risking, you're risking adulterated kratom. And that is what's causing some of these deaths that you're hearing about. It's the result of adulteration and 7OH products that are really causing these problems. And then the very last thing on the Kratom Consumer Protection Ordinance is that it does list violation language. And of course, that can be customized to what you want. So if, you know, a vendor was caught selling to someone under 21, or, you know, if they started stalking the 7OH products, there would be fines involved. And again, that can be tailored to your community. But, and then one last thing I just wanted to bring up because again, it was one of the questions, it was about research. There actually has been enormous amounts of research done. Shockingly, Mayo Clinic, which is one of the top hits on the Google search, has not done one study on kratom. But the Johns Hopkins University and the University of Florida are champion these efforts. They have got entire staffs devoted to studying. There's tons and tons of published scientific feedback on this particular supplement. So we actually do have a ton of science on that. So I would love to answer any questions anyone has, and I really appreciate your time tonight.
Questions from board members? Trustee Chris?
Good evening. I've got a couple of questions for you. How many different companies are producing and packaging this product right now?
So that's a very good question. Honestly, I couldn't tell you off the bat. There are numerous large companies, and there are some smaller batch companies. The majority of kratom sales, interestingly enough, comes from online. It's actually for the individual who typically consumes kratom most often. They will buy online because it's a lot less expensive. But yet, as Misty, when she talks to you, will let you know it's important to have it legal and there in your communities for people that are needing, you know, they're wanting that as an option to be able to get off of these illicit drugs. And of course, you know, if they run out of their online purchase. But it's sold online and in stores.
Okay. And you also spoke to labeling. Currently, is there any labeling going on, and how do you regulate that?
Yes, absolutely. So I'm going to go back to my little picture, the one I, I'm going to go back here. Okay. So like these products here, I recognize some of these brands. So like Mid-45 and OPMS and such, some of these, I don't know about these, I can't see. But if you look on the back, they actually, yes, they have all of that labeling in place. If you visit the American Kratom Association's website, they actually have a list of vendors that have passed. that have passed stringent packaging and labeling requirements for them to be able to say, hey, yes, these are quality products. And again, I recognize several of them on this picture in general. But you certainly don't want to go order from somebody in Indonesia that puts it in a, you know, a Ziploc baggie that, you know, is, has got a marker on it. I mean, that, you're just crazy to, to intake something like that. But most of these stores have good labeling. If you, for instance, were to walk into a smoke shop and to look at a product and turn it over and it's just in a plain baggie with no marking, that would be the first thing that would go. But the majority of products that, honestly, a lot of them that are probably sold currently in your, your community are, are satisfying the labeling and the packaging requirements. But the biggest thing would be to get those 7OH products off your shelves.
Okay. So, so you're leaning to the fact that it's buyer beware? Because some, only some have passed stringent testing and you're leaving it to the public to decide which ones aren't. And furthermore, there's, you said there's some sort of pending legislation to get your competitors' products off the shelf or to get the synthetic ones or something like that?
Yeah. Yeah, they're not, they're not competitors, just to let you know. They are just, they are just an offshoot, I hate to say it, but greedy people that want to make money.
Yeah, but they're competing products.
Yeah, they're entertaining, they're, they're literally trying to, they're trying to capture the addiction market is what they're trying to do. And it's, it's bad news product. The top scientist with Johns Hopkins and also University of Florida, I was at a conference and they have nothing good to say about it. It is, it is, they call it a chemical mess that's actually made with pool shock. That's how disturbing it is. And so this is, yeah, it's not a competitor thing, it's a safety thing.
Okay. So, so there's literally no regulation, whether it's packaging, synthetic, they're all on the shelf together and it's up to the person behind the counter to make the recommendation? Or I'm, it sure seems like a very, it's, it's not precise at all exactly what you're getting. It's, it's, there's a lot left to chance.
Well, it wouldn't be difficult because again, I, again, all you would have to do is, is go and have someone, a committee or whoever, you know, set, set it up and said, okay, we're going to check to see what you're selling in your stores. It's very easy actually to pick out these seven hydroxy products because they are labeled 7OH. They're right there. Instantly, you would know that those are, are gone. And once you set it up and, and said, okay, we're moving it behind the counter, we are, you know, making sure that it's falling in that, that range of what's an acceptable 7OH amount, the rest is gone. And then all it would be, would be just, you know, especially at the beginning, you'd have to make sure that they were complying. But as time goes on, vendors understand what their responsibility is. And, you know, if you have some secret shoppers go in every so often, just to make sure that they are, you know, complying. And of course, if they're not, then find them.
So, so it's left, it's left to the vendors and it's left, left to us to potentially be the watchdog of something that could potentially be dangerous. I'll, I'll tell you, I, I lean to the side of, of just banning it. So it, it, nothing's called to question, but I thank you for your time.
No, and like, one last thing I do want to say is just keep this in mind. If in the end of the day, you do decide to say, you know what, we will ban this, I, I, I want you to really strongly consider just a sales ban because you do not want to turn your, you don't want to turn your consumers that really need it, someone like me, into a, into a criminal. I mean, the last thing you want someone like me doing is getting arrested and getting a criminal offense because they're treating their pain. So if, if you're really against it, it would not be hard. We always say, if you've got the power to reg, or power to ban, you've got the power to regulate. And so, you know, I just encourage you, please do not, don't leave, you know, don't leave it to chance that people are going to be called as criminals when they're not.
I don't, I think that's, that's a pretty, pretty serious assertion that, that that would, that would come, come to pass. I don't want kids on bicycles purchasing this stuff. So if an adult has an automobile and can go an extra two blocks to another city or another municipality that, that handles it, then, then there you have it. They have access to it. And you also said internet also. So it's, it's not making anybody into a criminal. It's not making anybody desperate to, to acquire this. They will still have ways to, ways to obtain it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Menzouzek.
Thanks for your presentation. I appreciate hearing both sides of every issue. My question is about your campaign here. Are you looking for, are you working towards national legislation? Are you looking towards state?
Yes. In fact, tomorrow I am headed to Washington DC and we are actually working on getting cosponsors for a federal Kratom Consumer Protection Act. It has already been drafted. We are just now going through the, you know, the federal process. So we are, we're going state by state, trying to pass this legislature because we do not want states to have dangerous products on the shelf. And, you know, like I said, my state's done it right. They, Utah's, you know, Utah and several others have done it right. And, you know, until these other states catch up, we're, you know, we're, we're going state by state, but we're definitely going on a federal level as well.
And what, what has happened in the state of Michigan for your campaign?
So currently, I would have to look, currently, there is not a federal, or sorry, Kratom Consumer Protection Act that is in the mix right now. You know, that's a good question. I should look that up. There could be some bills that are being heard right now. Melody, I know Melody's on this call. She's in the chat. She can answer to know if there's any bills particularly in Michigan that are being heard during the session right now. But I know right now, there's not something super active, which I'm not, I typically would have heard that they're voting on the KCPA real quickly, but that doesn't mean that there aren't some bills that are in the mix right now.
Our attorney is waving her hand.
Oh, yeah. Great lead.
There is proposed legislation by Lori Stone.
Make her phone.
There is proposed legislation by Lori Stone when she was, was she in the House or Senate?
She was in the House.
When she was in the House, and obviously she's mayor of Warren right now, but she had developed some legislation that she was trying to get passed. But she was the most major proponent of it at the time. And when she left office and left Lansing, it just kind of...
I, I, I'm looking, you know what, I just looked right now because I have a program called Legiscan and there are no current bills correct, right now, being heard on the Michigan level.
Trustee Wade?
Yes. I spoke with our state rep, Joe Aragona, over the weekend and he asked me to pass this along. He is very confident that a bill will be introduced with the 21 age limit in September.
Oh, great.
And the feedback he's getting is he's pretty confident it'll be passed. And he asked me to share that with the group.
Fantastic. That's, that's such good news because again, we're all about responsible regulation. We're not about just a free for all.
Did he, I'm sorry, can I, who sponsored that bill?
I don't know who the sponsor was. I contacted Mr. Aragona to see if there was anything going on. And he made a few phone calls and got back with me. And he said that he's been told that there will be a bill introduced in September and the feedback he's got is very positive that it'll pass. That's, that's the information he gave me and he asked me to pass that along to the group.
And can I follow up with Laura? Also, Laura, well then, you're going to be in DC tomorrow on this matter. Will you be speaking to any congresspeople on this, what they're doing? And if so, would you be able to contact Michigan and find out what Michigan is?
I would love that. I would love that. I know that we've got several appointments set up with as many of the staff or, or, you know, or lawmakers that we can. And so I would absolutely love, I will, I will actually reach out to see if they've got appointments set up for Michigan and see if I can, I can participate in that particular group to be able to talk, just considering I've just spoken to this group. So yes, let me reach out to the AKI. I actually fly out tomorrow. So the day that we're actually going to be lobbying is on Wednesday. So I will have time and I can obviously reach out to all of you and let you know who I'm speaking to and what the plan is for that.
Thank you.
One, one question I have, Ms. Romney, if I could, is that you've focused in on, and I think some of the states have also focused in on this synthetic version versus the plant-based version. And how would one know the difference other than, you know, if they were responsible in adding labels? How would this, you know, is there a different way of marketing this? Is there different labels that are required to put on, you know?
Yeah. So, so they would, if, if, all you'd have to do, number one, you'd look, if it says seven hydroxy on it, on the front, it's a 7OH product. The only other thing is on the very back, you would, you would look at the label and there's, there's listed on every product, it will show how much seven hydroxy is in that product. And so if there was any question at all, you would look down and say, oh, like on those little extract bottles I just showed you, those, you looked at them and they flipped over, it's less than 2%. And so those would be legal, but the synthetic products would be in excess of that percentage and therefore instantly you'd know that they would be the synthetic and be, would not be, would should be taken off the shelves.
So help me understand, what, what do they call the synthetic? What is the active ingredient or agent or whatever?
It's seven hydroxymetrogenine. It's 7OH is the actual, you know, what they, you know, it's a hard, it's a mouthful. So that's where they actually call it. As you can see on here, seven hydroxymetrogenine. If you look on any of these, it would say all of that.
All right. And the real stuff is labeled as what?
Kratom. It will actually, see like right up here at the top, can you see where it says kratom? That would be kratom. Those are probably capsules. These down here are, these are probably drinks of some sort down in here that, again, labeled that. These would be the extracts in this particular picture. And so again, right now, it's not hard. I mean, if you just didn't even know and you looked at this picture, you could pick it out in two minutes to see which of the 7OH products are, are there. It's not a hard, I mean, they look just like narcotics.
And so you've, you've testified that you believe that this works for you better than other things that have worked. Why do you believe that that's so? I mean, like, what, like, how do you think it, like impacts or what, what relief it, like, do you have any scientific kind of like explanation?
Yeah. So again, it, it does act on your opiate receptors. The other thing that's interesting about it is it does help, it has kind of a natural dopamine, you know, SSRI type, that's not the right word, but it, it has those natural tendencies to it. So that's produces that extra mood, boost as well, that helps especially people with depression and PTSD. The thing, I'll tell you the thing I like about kratom the most, and trust me, I, again, over 30 pharmaceuticals, I tried cannabis. By the way, cannabis, I just, I mean, no offense to anyone in here that uses medical cannabis, but for me, it was bad news. I, it gave me really bad anxiety and the high that I felt from it, I, I couldn't function at all. I hated it. But when I took kratom, I was shocked because I literally took, you know, like a half a teaspoon or a teaspoon of it. And I was like, okay, waiting for some altered feeling to hit and it didn't ever come. I, I state that it makes me feel normal and not drugged, which is why it's such a miracle for me that I get the pain relief. I literally, without it, I, like this morning, I woke up at four in the morning and my pain level was at a solid eight. I could not, this tonight was, today was really bad. Could not, you know, go back to sleep. I, I took a dose of kratom and by seven o'clock in the morning, of course, I went back to sleep. Seven o'clock in the morning, I'm, I'm back down to a three to a four level, which is just a miracle for me to be able to pull the pain down that much. Now opioids do help me. They, they absolutely do. I, you know, they, they do. And if, you know, I could take opioids if I can have access to them, but honestly, I don't like how opioids make me feel. They do make me feel more altered and this, I don't have anything like that. I could literally stay here today and hand out a few of these kratom pills. I would truly feel so comfortable to say, okay, take a few of these and stay here and let me know what you'd feel. And you'd go, whoa, that's it? Because it's that, that one of the scientists at Johns Hopkins says there, it's one of the most boring drugs out there because, or boring substances out there. She says it just isn't. Now, can you abuse this? Absolutely. Could you go down and say, I'm going to, I'm going to keep taking, you know, more and more shots every day? Yes. But that is an addict that's going to be doing that, not the traditional person who is consuming this. The one other thing that's interesting about kratom is it has a natural feeling.
I'm sorry to cut you off, but I wanted to like, you know, talk about sort of like how you get the product that you need. Can you go into a CVS or I know these, you know, drugstores are regional, but can you go into a CVS? Can you go into a Rite Aid or a, you know, other type of thing and get this?
Okay. So that's our hope. I would love to see it. I'll be honest. I, I, I hate smoke shops. I, I won't go in them. I just don't like them. I'm actually, I, I don't smoke, I don't drink, I don't do any of that. So for me, I don't feel comfortable in those shops. So that's another reason I go online. But I would love it someday to be able to go and be sold in CVS. And you know, honestly, that's where, that's where it would be, that, you know, if we get this federal Kratom Consumer Protection Act passed, I can see that happening. But yet I also know that this would be a behind the counter product, just like cigarettes are. You don't want your teen year old taking this. You don't. And, and I really appreciate the gal that talked and said, you know, this is not a teen drug of choice. It's because it's gross. You literally take that powder and it tastes like you're, you're drinking hay. It's just, it's nasty. So nobody really wants to take this. And, you know, there, there is some argument that some of these companies, you know, do have attractive, you know, there's happy hippo and things that make it look pink and fun. Again, that's why it needs to be behind the counter because you don't want some kid coming in going, ooh, that looks fun and trying something that they, they shouldn't be taking.
So you share the concern, I think, of some of the folks here that smoke shops and gas stations versus drugstore, you have that same level of concern?
That what? It's that it's not sold?
That, that the places this is available is a smoke shop and a gas station versus a drugstore.
No, it's not a concern to me. You, we just, it just isn't currently sold in, in drugstores. So it's not a concern that you have to go into the smoke shop. In fact, in some ways it's good because these smoke shop people should be watching to make sure there's no kids that come in. So I mean, in, in that vein, it is good that it's being sold in those adult stores. But again, I certainly wouldn't want it sold not behind the counter in a convenience store.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Supervisor, there is somebody on, not to interrupt you, whatever you choose, but there is somebody, Melody, on attending remotely that would like to speak when you call on her.
So trustee King first and then we'll get to Melody.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Romney, so what would you say of the six states that have banned it completely? And then the other 20 states that are currently, you know, considering banning or some level of legislation? What would you say to, to those states?
Okay. So let me, let me tell you what happened real quickly about some of these banned states and what happened. So back in 2016, this is a little bit more information than probably me, but that's okay. Back in 2016, the FDA was, they wanted to ban this product. And so it was this huge thing. They said, we want to ban it. We're, we're turning it over to the DEA to be scheduled. And there was a lot of outcry. A lot of these states said, oh no, oh no, this is not good. You know, the FDA wants this banned. And so they jumped on the bandwagon and went and did that. But then what's interesting is the FDA sent that to the DEA for scheduling. For the first time in history, the DEA did their O factor analysis and said, it doesn't meet it. It does not meet the eight factors that make it a drug of concern that we want to schedule it. So they kicked it back. And so, you know, the FDA obviously was pretty shocked about all this. And, you know, so that's why, like I say, first time in history. But a lot of these states had, you know, kind of jumped the gun and said, oh, we're going to ban because it's going to get banned anyway. And then now they haven't. We have been working to try to overturn those bans. I know we are very close. In fact, they believe that New Hampshire, which is, which is a, a state that's, we had a KCPA put in. No, Rhode Island, sorry, wrong, right next to each other. Rhode Island, that is a banned state. And this year it looks like that, that they are pretty confident that that's going to flip back to a KCPA state.
So, so the, the states, the other counties and the cities that have banned this, you, that are outside of those banned states, you're, you're saying that they were either... that are outside of those banned states, you're, you're saying that they were either jumping the gun or that they are maybe too premature in relationship to their decisions on what they made on kratom, correct?
Yeah, so this is what, again, I just want to, I've said this to Shannon a million times, I, I cannot tell you how appreciative I am, I am of your, of your board, because there are too many states or too many cities out there. Like for instance, there has been some recently in Mississippi that have, that have jumped the gun and said, oh, we're gonna ban. And I've reached out to them and people have reached out to them and said, you need to look at this issue. You need to see that there actually is a way to deal with this. And, um, and they have completely refused. Um, you know, they are some of these cities that have the highest level of addiction and, you know, people, I, I have talked to some guy, I'll be honest, that was in, um, that was in Louisiana, and he's a vendor, and he said, yeah, 7OH, that's all they sell now. And that, that alarmed me. That super alarmed me. And I'm like, this is, this, you guys have got to move on this and get this off your shelves. But some, again, without having the education that you guys are getting, they're, you know, they're making these decisions to, you know, to take it away from everyone. Um, whereas I, I've heard some of these patients just in tears, you know, knowing that if this really does get banned in their state, I mean, they could end up in prison, they, and they don't have an option. They will have to quit jobs. And I truly worry about, you know, long-lasting repercussions, suicides even, if, you know, if, if, if a state actually goes ban. And that's why a lot of these states have thought about it, but then when they've really heard the details, they have flipped and said, no, we'd rather pass the KCPA. In fact, uh, Mississippi is a perfect example. There were six ban bills on the, on the docket this year on the legislation, and there was a KCPA. They have passed the KCPA and it's on the governor's desk for signature in, on Thursday. So they, you know, they're recognizing the fact that this is the way to go, um, is, is, is legislation and good regulation.
Thank you, Ms. Romney. I appreciate it. We've given you a considerable amount of time to be able to, to speak through this. So I appreciate your, your vantage point and, um, we.
Ms. Meltzer, you had somebody?
Ms. Wolf, I believe.
Melody.
Melody, um, I believe, and I believe I've connected with Melody. She's from Kalamazoo, I believe, but go right ahead.
But this summer, I will be living about a half an hour from Clinton Township. So this interests me. Um, I'm an 11-year consumer. I take it for pain relief. And before kratom, I was using a walker in wheelchair. I was able to go to the Detroit Zoo with my family a couple of times, but they had to push me around in the wheelchair. And then I was, um, asked to, um, provide full-time childcare for my granddaughter in 2022 for the year because childcare closed down unexpectedly. Um, so I went to the same zoo where my kids pushed me around again, I pushed my granddaughter around the zoo. And this summer, I'll be coming to your side of the state, um, because my daughter and son-in-law have a pretty hefty home repair bill. And so they have asked me to come live with them for four months this summer to help them save some childcare costs. And I just do not want to have it banned in Clinton Township. My daughter and I are somewhere and if we get pulled over for whatever reason, a bright light or in an accident, I have a concern that that would be a issue for us.
Okay. Well, thank you, thank you for that. There was a hand up in the audience. Um, do, we need you to step forward to the microphone.
I just had a question for the person who was from the.
Well, so.
Laura.
So state your question and then it's up to her. If she wants to respond, I can recognize her.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so in the state of Michigan, there's currently no labeling requirements on kratom or 7OH. So how would a consumer in Michigan go into a store and know what is 7OH or what is kratom?
Uh, yeah, that is, that's a very good question. Um, they would, they would obviously, I, I hate to say it, but it's buyer beware at this point. Um, that's why I don't like the fact that this, uh, 7OH is, is on the shelves because they are putting themselves at risk by walking in and buying a product that they don't know anything about. I would hate to think that a vendor would be pushing that, but you know, they are moneymakers and they could be pushing a 7OH because it makes them more money. But, you know, at least I'd rather have them take a pure plant that, that it's backed by science, that they know that, you know, they're not gonna have their breathing stopped versus a 7OH product.
Mr. Grossenberger, did you want to do this now?
I, I want it, Grossenberger, whenever the public comment is.
Okay, okay. All right. Trustee King, uh, the, you have one more speaker?
Yes, we have, uh, our own township lawyer here, Linda, to be able to just talk through briefly just what are some of our legal options to, to explore.
Well, currently now, we presented you with two different variations of ordinance. One actually bans all kratom possession, sale, everything. The other bans kratom, um, possession and sale to, and distribution to persons under 21. Um, there's also the, uh, obviously you could do nothing and see if the state's about to, uh, do something in September or not. I do think that based on the terminology I'm hearing, that would suggest that a bill has not been introduced, there's not a sponsor yet, but there's some optimism that something should be happening in, in September. So, um, if you have any questions about what's been drafted so far, um, I'm happy to answer those.
I appreciate that. You know, uh, yeah, some of the work that, um, I did prior to this was to look at some different ordinance options, uh, for, for our township. So as Linda was able to, to be able to talk through, um, I came to our budget ways and means, uh, meeting with those ordinances with some ideas of what could it look like and to see what the appetite would be of that committee and what we were pursuing. Um, again, to be balanced and to have a, a level of options of what we could be looking at. And as Linda indicated, our, our, our true option could just be, we do nothing. Um, I, our other option could be that we, we ban it, uh, age of 21 years of age or older, put some level of age restriction. Um, we could just, uh, end the sales of it within the township. Um, so there's a, there's a number of different options that we can look at. Pretty concise, but, um, wanted to make sure that we, again, were armed with, uh, decisions and, and not necessarily frameworked into just one specific, uh, you know, step that wouldn't allow us to have some flexibility.
Okay. Um, clerk Meltzer?
So the thing I just, I still get hung up on, I, I definitely don't want it exposed for, for people under 21. I think, um, children, um, specifically, I don't like them to have access to it. But the thing that kind of concerns me here is even if we, if we were to allow it, it's still not regulated so that we know we're not getting an adulterated, you know, product. How do we, how does Utah, Laura, I guess this is a question through you supervisor, how does Utah guarantee that its residents are getting an unadulterated product versus a compromised ingredient?
Yeah, so every, how Utah does it is every product that's sold, now this is on a state level, every product that's sold is registered with the state. So if like a vendor comes in and says, you know, not, there's not a hundred vendors that, you know, do this, but I saw the list, it's actually, you can go online and see what they've done, because I just looked at it the other day. They say, okay, I'm going to be selling this extract and this strain and da-da-da-da-da. And they, they register each product and, and that is what they're allowed to sell. And then if they go in and they're selling anything off that list, then of course they get fined and it gets, it gets pulled off. And of course with 7OH, it is banned in the state. So that, you know, there is no company that will ship into, uh, you know, unless they do it illegally, of course, but there, there should be no company that ships into Utah that would allow that 7OH to enter in our market.
Thank you.
Further questions from the board? Okay, we'll open it up to the public. John, you were next, and Sarah, I got you.
John Grossenberger, uh, 1-804-200-DRIVE, former state legislator candidate and current candidate as of last week. I don't want to be adversarial with the board. I like you all. I, but I question, especially with the experts saying that there's so much legislation coming up in state levels and federal, if it really is a city issue. I don't want to be adversarial and challenge your jurisdiction. But I feel like all these experts should be talking to state-level legislation. We don't have the resources or the time to hear all the information, to get all the questions answered, and, and they didn't all have them. I, I just question whether we should ban or restrict at all. Uh, I heard Kid Meltzer and, um, Mr. Crest talk about like the kids. Well, and this is no offense to you, but part of the reason I ran originally is because John James tried to tell me I shouldn't let my kid use TikTok. That's not his decision and this isn't yours. I don't know a lot about kratom, but that is my choice to decide if my kid will have it. You're gonna tell me on a township level that I can't give my kid something that maybe my doctor tells me that I should try? I take real, real issue with that. It's not your job to raise my kids. It, it's my job. So for you to restrict it, it sounds like, it, it sounds like it's pretty dangerous and we should look at it at a state or a federal level. But I question why the township has the resources to really investigate enough harmful effects to know whether you should be telling me that I can't give it to my daughter if, you get what I'm saying? I, I hope, I hope what I'm trying to say is coming through here. I don't think you guys should be doing it. If, uh, these experts have those concerns, it sounds like plenty of people are going at state-by-state level. Let's leave it to them rather than telling us we're gonna ban it here and then, oh, they'll just go buy it in our city and come here. No, no cop, no police officer is gonna be searching a car for something they don't even know what it is. They haven't been trained for, right? Let the state regulate it and then the stores will comply rather than use our resources. That's it. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Neenstedt, I hope I'm saying that right?
Sure.
Okay, all right.
My name is Fred Neenstedt, 41362 Justin Drive. So I haven't heard anything about the manufacturing of this product. If somebody could comment on that, somebody who has, uh, an expert understanding, I would appreciate that. So, uh, we know that the FDA bans tetrahydrocannabinol. Why is it that it's legal in Michigan? It can be grown, it's licensed, it's distributed, it's processed for consumers, there is some protections, there's hybrid reasons for medical costs or, or medical use. But yet, we don't have any local jurisdiction except licensing. Licensing has been an abominable failure. Okay? The economics of this licensing process has disrupted many communities. It's now a fight to who can get more business for this product. And some of the, um, comments remind me of when there was the first discussion of medical use. I can't understand why anybody would let a child get anywhere near this. But yet, if you go to Warren, there are licensed distributors of gummy bears that offers a, a home usage sent directly, let's call it DoorDash. What kind of limitations can the state ever really have? So what are you asking for here today? Is this really truly informational? Or is this a opportunity to cover up a possible rollout of another product that is damaging to the family? So I hear the word coalition on this effort. What coalition has involved a religious network? Has anybody consulted the damaging effect on the family? What is the pro and con of some of these products if a child sees that, let's say, a less than prolific parent would offer it to someone under 21? So we have all kinds of things that try to prevent harm to children, but yet, parents are derelict. So we try to force parents to be more conscious of how they behave with children. Now, I, I don't think the state can regulate these kinds of things appropriately. It breaks down, we, we lose control, and there should be, um, a more, uh, family-based method of teaching families how to behave so that they don't produce a situation where addiction is the answer for a young 17-year-old. Alternative methods of becoming addicted are tremendous. There's all kinds of ways you can become addicted in our community today. The root cause is how does a child become addicted?
So Mr. Neenstedt, if I could, I want to keep the discussion. We have one issue on the agenda, which is, you know, what should the township, if anything?
Township should do nothing.
On this particular substance. And so I'm gonna ask you to kind of narrow your focus into that issue.
Number one, what is the manufacturing process? And is it gonna be licensed under this thought? And how much of an input is this coalition? And individual experiences, I would accept, is only anecdotal. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. And, um, Ms. Towner?
Hello. Hi, everyone. My name is Ms. Towner, 397-57 Breiler Court. And tonight, I'm here as a community member. I've been in front of the board before, lots of different reasons. And, um, I think the biggest thing that I've heard tonight and what I wanted to bring forward is that people don't know what kratom is. People, you know, we're, we're talking about it now, which is great, but I talk to people in the community all the time. They don't know what it is, they don't know any of the effects, they don't know it's being sold already in our community. And I think that's also disturbing. And what I also heard tonight was that about the labeling, and I have been told many times that that is, that the labeling is, um, not accurate, there's non-existent labeling. And what someone said earlier, um, you know, we can't take risks, it can't be walk into a store and something can't be labeled. I mean, that just does not make any sense to have a safe community. Um, for adults, I mean, as well as children. I mean, I think we're clear on that, you know, that we all agree about, some level about the age, you know, situation. But also the storefronts. I mean, I, I'm in the community all the time. I mean, and I see the tobacco shops. They look like neon lights, they're really attractive, they're attracting people to these stores. They kind of look like many dispensaries to me. And, you know, um, I think that there's, that is not, it's also goes along with the packaging of these products. They're packaging the products, they're marketing the storefronts, so they're attractive to bring people inside. And then you've got these products that are inside that we really don't know what they are. So I just would hope that we have clear regulation, packaging, concerns, uh, those type of things would be, I think, very helpful for our community.
Thank you. Uh, sir, I think you raised your hand.
Mr. Supervisor, there is one person also, um, attending remotely that would like to speak.
Okay. We'll give them the floor after this gentleman.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Colpa. I'm a Bloomfield Township resident, 5110 Tootmore. I'm also an industry advocate for kratom. I appreciate the work that the township has done and I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you tonight. I was hoping to just make a few comments to clarify some of the background information that was within the material that was provided. Many of it has been clarified today and I appreciate the advocates that you've put on. As was mentioned, kratom or mitrogynine speciosus is a natural botanical in the same plant family as coffee. It is often used for an energy boost or a mild, mild mood-enhancing effects. It is relatively mild, like tea or coffee. In the United States, it's used by upwards of 15 million consumers. The primary alkaloid in kratom is mitrogynine and acts on multiple receptor systems, including partially at the mu opioid receptors. However, this does not make it an opioid. It is unique in that it is a partial agonist in a manner that it is distinct from classic opioids and as a result, it does not cause respiratory depression, giving a higher safety profile. There is no evidence that kratom products produce the rapid intoxication euphoria or dissociative effects associated with rapid, with opioids either. While kratom is definitely not risk-free, when used responsibly, it's shown to have a very favorable safety profile. It is true that the US FDA has not approved kratom for therapeutic use, but importantly, it has also not scheduled kratom federally, despite multiple reviews. As a dietary ingredient, the ingredient should not be marketed or be making health claims in the first place. Kratom is not a drug and should not be making drug or health-related claims. Researchers from numerous academic institutes, including Johns Hopkins, Columbia, and University of Florida, are among the many scientists who have found that kratom provides pain relief activity on pain receptors in the brain without dangerous or potentially deadly, deadly respiratory side effects induced by classical opioid medication. Further, the US FDA itself conducted a clinical trial on kratom. The first leg was published in 2024, just last year, and showed that kratom could be safely used and effective and well-tolerated in the human population. While the FDA has made inflammatory statements about the safety of kratom in the past, the agency acknowledges through court proceedings that it does not have evidence that kratom was dangerous and that prior statements were made regarding the communications were in. was dangerous and that prior statements were made regarding the communications were in informal and non-binding channels, and were not pursuant to internal decision-making processes and did not reflect the formal views of the FDA. FDA's recent statements in court and its own actions related to its own claims are different than what has actually been stated in many of the citations that were made today about the FDA seeing this as an issue. They have made recalls of kratom-related products, but they've made it for non-kratom purposes, such as having an unlisted allergen in the product or having a salmonella infection into that product. This is not unique to kratom. This can happen to any food or dietary ingredient, and that's what the FDA is there to monitor and to be sure that it's safe. FDA has always acknowledged kratom as a botanical, and therefore, the dietary ingredient is regulated as the Dietary Supplement Health and Education Act of 1994. Given its long-established history of safe use, kratom can be used as a food ingredient, such as a natural tea, or as a dietary ingredient in some of the items shown tonight, pills, shots, and other formats. There are standards for companies in practice that must be adhered to within this marketplace. It was asked about the manufacturing processes. These product processes should be manufactured subject to the federal good manufacturing processes and registered food facilities. The labeling should comply with the federal acts that are out there requiring you to list what all the active ingredients are and how the consumer should use the product. Again, this is not a local issue, this is a federal issue that needs to be handled. Whatever is put into place at this level is not going to affect whether or not these products are labeled properly. That needs to be handled at the federal level, subject to federal law and state law where it's ineffective in KCPA. We talked about the potential ban. The FDA was pulled back from doing any ban, and it is very important to note that all those states that banned this product in 2016 did so as a result of the FDA claiming to act and then not acting, as a result that there have been no statewide bans, and numerous states are looking to pull back those bans at this point. The KCPA's that we typically see into place cover a variety of issues associated with the project, but generally reflect what is required by federal law: proper testing for the products, proper labeling, good manufacturing processes, and in certain cases, age-gaining at 18 to 21 years old. Kratom used in its traditional form as a full-spectrum alkaloid offers a fairly strong safety profile. As mentioned before, it's a partial agonist, and therefore, only partially covers the brain receptors and does not cause respiratory depression. When used in excess, typically, a consumer will have no more of an adverse effect than some nausea. The fact that it has been highlighted in multiple human clinical trials, and the fact that the FDA from last, including the FDA's trial from last year. In fact, in the clinical trial, there were no severe adverse events. Where there are allegations kratom's death in the marketplace, when that data is usually dug into, it typically shows that the injury involved a poly-drug use or a pre-existing condition. In some cases, there were adulteration from narcotics or for use of synthetic compounds that were in those products. But once those issues are removed through safe regulations, safe labeling, then the incident rates associated with harm or injury from kratom is very low. I fully support educating consumers and requiring testing and age-gating of this product, as the focus for scientific achievement related to kratom has been focused on adult users. However, banning them outright, given the multitude of scientific and medical research supporting the safe and therapeutic use, should not be ignored. I do appreciate your time and the opportunity to speak, and the one last point I'll make was that Senator Bergman from Michigan is a co-sponsor on the federal KCPA. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Cliff Meltzer, you want to bring the person up from online?
Yes, this is Misty. Are you still available? Missy Brown? Here she is. Yep, very good, thank you.
Sorry about the shower cap.
No problem.
We're heading to Washington, D.C., and we will be speaking on Capitol Hill on Wednesday. But I do want to provide y'all with my testimony. My name is Miss Brown, and I'm a loud and proud Colorado advocate and consumer. I was addicted to FDA-approved pain pills, benzos, and muscle relaxants for 11 years straight, from 2008 to 2019. I got fired from chronic pain management in April of 2019 because I didn't show up for a per-contract pill count. My drug dealers didn't have any pink oxytocin, so I just didn't show up. After that, I went to the streets and started doing cocaine while I was researching a new pain management doctor. In June of 2019, while in cocaine withdrawal, I watched that documentary, A Leaf of Faith. My journey with kratom began the very next day by me going to my local smoke shop. When I went there, the kratom was behind the counter, in a glass case, and I had to be, they had to check my ID to buy it. Kratom shut that, I need one more snort, one more pill, one more escape noise off in my brain. It allowed me to work on my whys of addiction. I have not been back to pain management almost six years. I'm a functioning member of society again. I'm a thriving mother again. I pay taxes again. I am no longer a burden to my kids, and I am now a first-time grandma. I will be forever grateful and thankful that I accidentally found lab-tested whole-leaf powder kratom. I now pass on my journey with the science to help those struggling with addiction, chronic pain, anxiety, and depression. Let me tell you this. You know, I was an active addict for 11 years straight. I never once admitted that I was an addict, a person who suffered with substance use disorder. And when I accidentally found kratom, and like I said, it shut that noise off in my brain, it shut off those cravings. I constantly cravings. It shut that noise off in my brain. And the further away that I was from taking my last, you know, legal addictions, the more I was allowed to work on my whys of addiction. I didn't have to go to recovery center. I didn't have to go to detox, you know? I didn't have to be put on Suboxone or Methadone. So in reality, because I'm so loud and proud with my, you know, advocacy about how kratom, holy kratom, saved me, I'm like a recovery center nightmare, because I didn't fill a head, you know, a bed with the head. So I just want to, and what Laura was talking about, with the synthetic 7OH8, you have to, you have to differentiate between that and whole-leaf powder. As I testified at my Colorado Capitol, I said that whole-leaf kratom powder is an exit from addiction. These synthetic 7OH8 products are an entry into one. And you have that power in your hands. So I just wanted to give you guys my testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, so if I could, you know, it's interesting, kind of taking a little bit of a different approach here on this issue. Usually what happens is that somebody has an idea to introduce something, they take it to a committee, that committee then sort of goes through the process. In this case, it went to Budget Ways and Means. Think folks there said, "There's a lot here. There's a lot of different sort of surrounding issues, and there's options as to what we can do." And so I think what Trustee King did was a responsible move by saying, "Let's bring this to a special board meeting. Let's bring it to sort of a public forum where we can go through and discuss these things." I used to serve in the state legislature. I can tell you that there were tons of committee hearings, and I'm sure Ms. Meltzer can sort of, you know, attest to this as well. There are tons of committee hearings that ultimately wound up being something that even, either the committee, or the House, or this, they decided not to act on it, you know? But it was somebody who had an idea, wanted to get a hearing, wanted to be heard, wanted to bring an issue forward for consideration, and sometimes they pass, sometimes they don't. There are a number of reasons why they move, why they don't. So I think it's a situation where we now have to bring this back as a body and start to talk about it and weigh options and take into account all that we've heard here today. So, Trustee King?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Just two things I want to follow up on, and then I'll leave the floor to the rest of my colleagues. One being, I want to say thank you to this board. You know, whether we have, we've had disagreeing, you know, things in the past, I'm sure we'll have them again in the future, but the opportunity to be able to sit down, be able to hear this out, and take this informational session, to be able to hear from professionals, hear from our residents, hear from other individuals from different communities, I respect that and want to say thank you for being able to make this happen. Two, I just will say this, I put my cards out on the table. I think individuals know where I personally stand on this. I think we have an opportunity as a community to make sure that we take care of our own. There's a number of situations that we look at within our society. We wish somebody stood up and said something to help prevent something, to help save someone's life, or lives plural, or did different things, did things differently. I think we're in one of those situations. We can wait for the federal government, we can wait for our state legislature to look this up again, potentially make a decision, outweigh what we're doing here. But I think what we did unwrap today, and, you know, our supervisor called this out, there's a lot to this. And a lot to this means that there's some strong danger in my mind. Some of you may not feel that way. That being said, I'm also cognizant that I'm not just representative of my own thoughts, I'm representative of this township. And so in part, that means that I'll represent individuals who feel as if this isn't a dangerous substance, and that we do need to have more options or choices. So upon leaving this meeting, I'm going to leave myself completely open for conversation, for emails, for phone calls, for coffee. Individuals in this community who have a concern or ideas in this one way or another, to make sure that this isn't just, again, a mirror of just my own personal feelings, this mirrors and a representation of our whole township. So with that being said, I just want to say thank you for everyone's time, our professionals, our other individuals who care about this topic, who wanted to be able to weigh in. I will say thank you. And I believe there's some of our peers who want to speak.
Trustee Kress?
Through the chair, if I may, Ms. McGreal.
Yes.
If indeed it's the pleasure of the board to ban this substance until such time as the state takes action or gives us directive, could you find out, or could you calculate what the maximum fine would be and share that with us before the next board meeting?
$500.
That's the maximum?
Yeah.
Okay.
The ordinance that was introduced in the pack, it references another ordinance that lists what the penalties are.
Okay, thank you.
As a township, we can introduce a misdemeanor that's up to 93 days and/or a $500 fine, and then we also have civil infractions, which is like the equivalent of a speeding infraction.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Matuszak.
I want to thank everybody that presented tonight. I didn't know much about this subject before we started these discussions, so I thank Trustee King for bringing it to my attention, and for everyone who came and spoke tonight. I have some other concerns that people haven't really talked about. And none of them override being concerned for our kids, just let me say that out front. But I've stopped at a couple of smoke shops to talk to them about this. In many of these smoke shops, this is a substantial amount of income for them. People sell this, it's a legal product to sell. I don't like that they sell it, I hope that people wouldn't use it, but we have a lot of smoke shops and gas stations in this community, and it's part of people's income. So we need to be cognizant of that, the store owners. The second is enforcement. It's not the police that's going to be enforcing this, it would be our building department that would be enforcing this. And we have a person and a half to do this. How do we stop at all of these smoke shops, all of these gas stations, to figure out what they're really doing? I am really hesitant to pass an ordinance that we can't actually enforce. I think that sends a really bad message to the universe that we pass things that we can't enforce. So I need to think about that some more and talk to our various departments. I'm concerned about that. The other concern is, I agree, this is, I think, a state-level issue more than a local issue. It seems sort of silly to me that we would pass an ordinance banning this when you can drive a mile and purchase it somewhere else. That, I like to be a leader, I like to be, you know, taking the lead in something, but I have some concerns about this. And I don't know where I sit on this issue. I'm very clear, I don't want anyone under the age of 21 to have access to this. But I'm not clear about where, how I feel about the overall thing, given these issues. I think there's an economic component to this for our business owners, I think there's an enforcement component, and I think that the state needs to take action more than we do. Not that I'm not open to further discussion about this, but that's sort of where I'm at right at this moment.
Trustee Wade.
I kind of want to echo what Trustee Matuszak said. I, kind of the same thoughts went through my mind. And couple that with, like I said, I had a conversation with our state rep, Mr. Aragona, and he was pretty solid in the fact that he thought the state was introducing that bill. Maybe it would be in our best interest if we could get somebody here from the state at our next meeting, and they could maybe, you know, tell us where they're at. And a couple of people in the audience even kind of spoke on that. We don't have anywhere near the resources the state has. And although we had some really talented people get up and talk, we just don't have the horsepower that other people do. I personally, I think if, if somebody from the state could kind of give us a real insight as to what their plans are for September, I would feel more confident being part of a bigger picture than us sitting on this island where, and as Ms. Matuszak pointed out, somebody could drive across the street and just buy it anyways. I mean, you know, it'd be like spitting in the wind here. So my thing is, I really, my hat's off to Trustee King, because he did a lot of homework on this, and I think he opened the community's eyes. I really want to commend you on that. I think you did a great job on this. Looking at the overall picture, I do think we should have a 21-year-old ban on it, but I'm thinking that a bigger picture of it from the state might be our best way to go. So I don't know if one of us wants to reach out, and maybe we get somebody here from the state who maybe is planning on sponsoring this bill? Or if we could get a representative that could come and speak and kind of bring us up to speed as to what the state is doing.
I'm more than happy to pursue that, to be able to exhaust all measures for this board. Sorry, Chair, I didn't mean to speak out of turn there. Chair, could I ask our legal team just one question?
My only, yes.
Linda, who, how does, for example, these are, this is often sold in smoke shops or gas stations similar to cigarettes, who currently enforces our tobacco aspects of making sure that it's not sold, you know, to minors?
To minors. It would be through the police department, and then we'd have another layer, even though, you know, if this were going to trial or as we prepare for trial, it probably would need to be sent to a state lab, for a state lab to actually run something on this component to make sure it, in fact, is kratom.
Sure.
As opposed to, you know, someone throwing something in a jar and saying it's kratom. And then it would be prosecuted through Mr. Towner's office, through our current arrangement.
Thank you.
Good. Not seeing any more discussion? Anyone from the public? Any further comments from the board?
I just, one other thing, I guess what the intention was...
We were so close.
I know, just really quick, it's just more of a, just a business question. Are you planning on bringing this back at the next board meeting? Are you planning on, which is going to be a week from today? Or are you going to have more, need more time to...
Thank you, Ms. Meltzer.
...possibly bring it back?
Yeah, I mean, I think this is an opportunity where I'm going to do some more research, right? You know, so I think Mr. Wade, seems like Ms. Matuszak as well, were interested in more of a state-level approach and wanted to get, provided some more information from that angle. So again, I, this is not a, although I want us to hurry to be able to protect our township, I don't want to hurry and haste in advance of being able to make sure that we've exhausted all our measures appropriately and responsibly. So that being said, there's appetite for that, I'm going to pursue those measures. In addition, take that time to be able to talk to more of our residents and be open to, you know, getting that communication back. So the idea that I'd be able to come back next meeting with some level of a proposal... So, the idea that I'd be able to come back next meeting with some level of a proposal or ordinance or what have you, that would not be the case. I'm going to reserve time to be able to do it appropriately and continue to do it right.
The question was not to rush you.
Oh, sure. Oh, no, no, that was a fair question.
So I think I could sum that up by saying it's a work in progress. All right, okay. Motion to adjourn is in order?
So moved.
Moved by Clerk Meltzer, supported by...
Support.
Trustee Wade. Further discussion? I was in, excuse me, a roll call.
Clerk Meltzer, yes.
This is a special board meeting, not a committee meeting.
Trustee Wade?
Yes.
Trustee Matuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Kress?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilham?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Motion passes.
We're adjourned.